Good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to our Spokane City Council briefing and legislative session today. Since we're not, we only have a couple of items, we're not having our 6:00 PM session. Ms. Farnsworth, if you'd like to call the roll.
Council President Beggs.
Here.
Councilmember Cathcart. Is he not here?
He is, he's on the line. He's on the screen. But.
Councilmember Stratton.
Yep.
I'm here.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Present.
Let the record reflect that councilmembers Burke and Keneer are absent, though I believe that Councilmember Mum will be joining. Okay, Councilmember Mum.
I'm here.
All right.
Here.
Great. Thanks so much, Councilmember Mum, for joining us briefly in the middle of jury duty, no less. We look forward to hearing how we're doing jury trials in Spokane in the convention center. I'm gonna skip ahead to, well, first I, we have a couple of things that will take five votes today. One is to add a matter to the consent agenda, item eight. And then, secondly, we have a special budget ordinance that requires five votes, and we only have five councilmembers. So I'm looking for a motion to suspend the rules for purposes of adding to our agenda.
Councilmember Mum, so moved.
Second.
All right. Moved and seconded. Any discussion about suspending the rules? Not hearing any? All those in favor of suspending the rules indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Any abstentions? All right, the rules are suspended. Is there a motion to add item eight to the consent agenda, Third Amendment to lease Agreement with Elupalakua Ranch Incorporated?
So moved.
Second.
All right. Is, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion about adding that to the agenda? All right, hearing none. All those in favor of adding item eight to the consent agenda indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, nay? All right. Any abstentions? It's added to the agenda. And now, if we can go to the legislative agenda under special budget ordinances, Ms. Farnsworth, if you could read what's on the agenda. Or do we need to?
I think I do need to read it in.
But do we have to add this?
I don't, I don't think it needs to be added.
Okay, great. So go ahead and read it.
Okay. Ordinance C-36052, amending ordinance number C-35971, passed by the City Council December 14th, 2020, and entitled, "An Ordinance Adopting the Annual Budget of the City of Spokane for 2021, Making Appropriations to the Various Funds of the City of Spokane Government for the Fiscal Year Ending December 31st, 2021, and Providing It Shall Take Effect Immediately Upon Passage and Declaring an Emergency in Appropriating Funds in General Fund, from Unappropriated Reserves $43,750 to Operating Transfer Out Same Amount, and Asset Management Fund, from General Fund $43,750, Contributions/Donations $33,750 to Operating Rentals/L leases This action provides budget authority for Envision Center lease costs through the end of the year. Relates to Consent Agenda Item Number Eight. Council sponsor, Council President Beggs."
And just briefly, we briefed this at Pies Committee today, and essentially, the city is currently the leaseholder and would continue to be the leaseholder for the rest of the year, but would only pay a net of a third of the cost of the lease, and the other two-thirds would be paid equally from Spokane County and the Workforce Development Center. And the plan is for the county to take over the formal lease and continue to negotiate about further financial support from the city beyond the one-third amount to the end of the year. We do have one person who's called in to testify, Nicolette Occultree. If you're there, Nicolette? Okay. Nicolette, if you want to introduce yourself, you have up to three minutes.
Hello, it's Nicolette Occultree here. Without access to hard data on the Envision Center, we have very little to go on to gauge its success. And there's no question that some folks have had successful experiences reaching out to the Envision Center to be put in touch with these services, but there are also anecdotes on the other side from folks who showed up to the Envision Center during and before the pandemic who did not have successful experiences. Some stated they showed up and the building was locked, with no indication on how to reach the center online or in person in the future, or whether or not they were permanently closed, even. There appear to be significant barriers to accessibility, location being one. I've had folks complain to me directly stating that even before the pandemic, they went there and hardly any service organizations had representatives present. I've heard some of these organizations themselves complain that they can't afford to hire someone to be out there at the Envision Center full-time, which defeats the purpose of having a one-stop-shop for services and puts a significant burden on these service organizations to staff the center, which of course affects their budget and impacts the amount of money going directly to those who need the assistance. I appreciate that members of council raised questions about the efficacy of this program and requested more data on the operational success of the Envision Center. It'll be critical to know not only how many folks were successfully connected to services, but also what the overall average cost is for connecting folks to these services. If the cost of connecting folks to services is significantly high, then there's a real question as to whether or not that money would be better set going directly to the service organization or the individual seeking services themselves instead of having a middleman. It would be an interesting thing to know what percentage of those citizens that receive assistance from these service organizations are referred there through the Envision Center, and what percentage reach out to the service organizations directly. Obviously, if that number of folks being referred through the Envision Center is very small, then, you know, one would question whether or not the Envision Center is truly accomplishing what it was created to accomplish. Given the fact that they've helped more folks during the pandemic than ever before, there's also a real question about how much of the center needs to be focused online rather than in-person. And I'm not necessarily suggesting that the in-person center ought to be closed, just that it could be perhaps scaled down or re-envisioned, no pun intended, with respect to the in-person nature of the center. Perhaps more of a hybrid approach would be successful, and I'm really glad that these are the kinds of questions that you guys are asking along the way. Thank you for your time.
All right. Thank you, Nicolette. We don't have any other public comment. Do we have any councilmember commentary? Councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah, I, I'm gonna support this short extension. I, I think the Envision Center is really important in concept, and I wouldn't want to prematurely shut down what they're trying to do, but, but I am gonna rely heavily on the data and the information that we've requested for future extensions or future investments that we may make into the center. So I will support this today.
Other, councilmember Wilkerson.
Thank you. I also will be supporting it as a agency and group of providers that had come together to try something different. I'm always about being creative in how we outreach to our community, but there are some questions that need to be answered, but I certainly would not, not support a nonprofit group midstream without giving them the opportunity to step into that space to either grow or to do something differently.
Other council commentary? All right, I'll just say briefly, so we can get to a vote and get Councilmember Mum back to her duties. I've been to the Envision Center several times, both pre-pandemic and during the pandemic restrictions, and they've been very busy. There have been lots of nonprofits that are there. The nonprofits that are there are voluntarily there, no one's compelling them, and what I found that was helpful for most of the nonprofits I spoke to there is that it was really a win for them because they have obligations under their grants and funding sources to reach out to the community, and having one place where the community will come helps them on their numbers. And the fact that there's so many other services that are complementary, it helps their overall success. They might be helping someone with mental health, or medical, or housing, or employment, and the fact that people are getting other services at the same time is helpful. We did hear some explanation today of some of the challenges, of the fact that they rent space on the second floor of a building that the first floor wasn't open, and the challenge, but how they've addressed it, and that they're opening June 7th fully because the first floor is. So I think it's been a great program. I'm looking forward to it. I'm really happy that the city is now going into being only one-third of the funding of the rent, and they've attracted, I think it was over $6 million in grants and served thousands and thousands of people. So the, the future is bright, but I agree with everything mentioned by councilmembers Cathcart and Wilkerson and Keneer previously today, that we just need to get those statistics and show. I'm confident they'll tell a good story and have some ideas on other funding sources. With that, I'll call for a roll call vote. Councilmember Mum.
Aye.
Councilmember Stratton.
Aye.
Council Presidents and aye. Councilmember Cathcart.
Aye.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Aye.
All right. That passes five to zero. And Councilmember Mum, we have some other business, but I think you're excused to go back. We don't need that fifth vote, so it's up to you. Why don't we just?
Thank you. We're leaving the room, so if you don't need me, I will go.
Okay, great. Thanks. Why don't we go ahead and do that resolution? Ms. Farnsworth?
Okay. Ordinance C-36039.
Yep.
Granting a non-exclusive franchise to use the public right-of-way to Evergem LLC to provide non-cable telecommunications service to the public that is subject to certain conditions and duties as further provided. Council sponsors, Council President Beggs and Councilmember Cathcart.
And I don't believe we have any requested public comment. Any council commentary? Again, for anyone watching, this is just a franchise agreement. We allow companies to use our city, but we ask them to register with us and enter into a contract with us. With that, we'll go to a formal roll call vote. Councilmember Stratton.
Aye.
Council Presidents and aye. Councilmember Cathcart.
Aye.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Aye.
All right. That passes four to zero. And there's no boards and commission appointments, but there is a consent agenda. Oh, sorry. We're gonna get two reports. One from Dan Buller, if he's there, on the chip seal program. He wasn't able to join us last week, so if he would like to tell us just briefly about that, and then he can go back to his work.
I am here and pulling up our documents. So, had I been here last week, as I should have been, my apologies for that, I would have said that item four on last week's advanced agenda was the proposed low bid contract for arterial chip seal with Shamrock paving for $1.525 million, to which we proposed to set aside a 10% administrative reserve. This project chips seals a variety of streets around town, the location of which was in the briefing paper that was in last week's agenda packet. Low bid from Shamrock was about $98,000 or 6% under the engineer's estimate, and no other bids were received, which didn't affect the engineer's estimate. However, I'll, I'll tell you, we opened bids for the next arterial, or I'm sorry, for the residential chip seal, and Shamrock seems to have noticed that they were the only bidder, so next week when I come to you, not next week, we'll all be on holiday next week. The week after that, they unfortunately recognize the fact that they were the low bidder. But for this one, arterial chip seal, we're about $100,000 under budget, and it's locally funded.
Thanks so much, Dan. And we also, before we vote on the consent agenda, Fleet was going to get back to us for a report for an item that they want to vote on June 7th on electric vehicles for, I think, parking enforcement. So I'm not sure if, I think it's, is Jeff there, or some?
No, Rick Giddings.
Oh, I'm sorry, Rick. I was getting my new directors mixed up. I saw Jeff earlier today. Thanks, Rick, for joining us.
Thank you, Council President, councilmembers. David Payne and I are here to update the council on our lease of five Hyundai Kona's from Enterprise Fleet Management for parking enforcement. Earlier, I sent you all an email with the RFB results attached, so that you have time to look at them if you wished. For background, when this item was briefed about a month ago, Councilmember Cathcart brought up the availability of leasing Kona's locally for $250 per month. At that time, the discussion was postponed in order to seek clarification. Since then, we have determined that although the $250 rate was accurate, it was for gasoline-fueled Kona's. However, this prompted us to issue an RFB for all electric Kona's and just to see what, what came out of it. Three companies responded, Enterprise Fleet Management, Hyundai of Spokane, and Acme Auto Leasing. Hyundai of Spokane had the lowest bid, however, their response did not meet two principal requirements. The first is they could not supply white vehicles. This is important for public safety, uniformity, and recognition with our parking enforcement fleet. Theirs would be three different colors in five vehicles. And the other being that their lease was ended and so cannot be terminated in case of non-allocation of funds or for any other reason. Because of this, we are recommending Enterprise Fleet Management's proposal for the lease of the Kona's. If there's any questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah, I guess my question is, so, so the conversation is that there's money that we're gonna make on the back end, right, by selling these, and that's why we're okay going with a much higher lease cost? So can somebody get me just the full, at the end of 36 months, how much we think the city will, will end up paying minus what we make back? And so we can have an apples-to-apples comparison, because I'm looking at the, the bid you sent, and it looks like we're, we're gonna pay $300 more per month for Enterprise versus Hyundai, and so I'm wondering what those cost discrepancies are on the back end that would actually make that more palatable than paying the lesser lease cost?
Yeah, well, there's, there's two different types of leases, and so to give an apples-to-apples comparison is difficult. The Enterprise lease is an equity lease, so that their residual number is the price that we would be, that we would be guaranteed to get back, or that, that would be the residual kind of wholesale value. Anything that the vehicle sells for above that amount is our equity. We get to keep that. Hyundai's is, we turn the vehicle in, we get nothing. If we wish to buy the vehicle, we can buy it at about $4,000 higher. And so, and, and we can't see the future, but in the, because there is a likelihood that we may want to continue with the same vehicles because they'll be outfitted for license plate readers and that type of thing, there is a fair chance that we'll want to buy those at the end, and they'd be more expensive if we, if we go through Hyundai.
But is there a way to just estimate this is what we think the cost will be? Even if it's just an estimate?
I'm sorry to interrupt. Yeah, looking at the numbers on the, on the, the quote tabulation, Hyundai of Spokane thinks the retail value is gonna be about, around $20,400, and the, kind of the equity leases are looking at a, at a wholesale value of $16,000. So there's, we don't, we can't see the future, but it looks as if there's about a $4,000 difference between what we'd have to purchase them for. If we decide to purchase them, we, we would be able to purchase for $16,000 through Enterprise. It would cost us $20,400 to purchase them through Hyundai at the end of this.
But with one, we're gonna pay double the lease amount versus the other, so don't we make up for that in the, the reduced lease?
Absolutely. We, we would make up for that. However, the, the cost of making the vehicles white, we can't paint a leased vehicle, and so the, we can't, there's some options out there, but the options to make those vehicles uniform and white, because there's a limited supply of these vehicles, the, the cost to make those vehicles white is, is fairly expensive. Looking around, $4,000 for a wrap of a vehicle, that causes some other problems as far as we have to remove the wrap when, when the, when we turn the vehicle in. And so it is, it's a difficult decision. The, the cost is, is, the cost difference is fairly significant. David, you got something to say?
Yeah, Councilman Cathcart, I, I think the point that we're trying to get across, we understand that the Hyundai dealership lease was, was last month, month over month over month, but with the ever-evolving EV market and us not knowing if these Hondas are actually gonna work and fit, we do not, under the Hyundai lease, have the ability to terminate that lease early, where we do with the Enterprise lease. So it, the initial reason we went with Enterprise for these pilot programs was to allow us the opportunity at any given time to exit the lease, to go with something that was more viable or more available.
Okay, so we're just playing, kind of watching year by year to see what, what's effective, and if something better is on the market that we might want to transition to?
Yeah, and, and, yeah, and the dealers themselves are, when it comes to electric vehicles, because the market keeps changing, because vehicles keep improving, the battery life, they aren't able to actually predict or with accuracy what the value of that vehicle's gonna be. We, we enter into an agreement with these Hondas today, and all of a sudden, in, in 10 months, they develop a battery that's got twice, twice the distance availability or char, or charge longer, we wouldn't be able to get out of it if we were in with Hyundai. But, so I, I just, I just wanted to make sure we understood at that point, that this, this was more, right now, intended for us to be able to have that open-ended lease and the opportunity to seek a better vehicle or a more improved vehicle.
But last thing I'll ask, I guess, I would just wonder that if it'd make more sense to do two of these instead of five, wait a year, do two more based on what the conditions are, et cetera, just to make sure that, because my biggest concern in all of this is I just want to make sure that taxpayers don't feel like they are getting, essentially taken advantage of and we're buying some luxury items that, that they can't even afford, so.
Yeah, I'm.
Doesn't say that we have to buy five, that's the need, but, so we would have to come up with another solution for, for essentially for three vehicles, and, and I don't know what that would be at this time.
I, I would suggest that if you're, if you're looking to minimize that, they would need at least three, because I think they're looking at put license plate readers on three vehicles now where they have one, and the, and, and I'm only going from memory, so I may be wrong, but my, when we had the one that had the license plate reader wrecked and we wanted to transfer it, the total overall cost was somewhere in the vicinity of $6,000. So we would want to keep these on those vehicles as long as possible.
Any other questions on this brief? We're not voting on this today. Great questions, Councilmember Cathcart. I never knew the difference between an open and a closed lease, and I think we can kind of calculate a couple of quasi-apples-to-apples under scenarios of one year, two years, or three years, and kind of see that. But I, I agree with Mr. Payne that for the three that are gonna get the license plate readers, we're probably gonna want to purchase those, and, and Rick as well, straight out, because we're not gonna want to switch, and they'll last, according to other staff members, twice as long as a normal vehicle for miles, so we'd probably have them for a while. But let's keep looking at that until we get to the seventh. Great questions. Any other questions on that? All right, that brings us to the consent agenda as amended. So Ms. Farnsworth, if you'd like to read that.
Reports, contracts, and claims. Number two. Number one was deferred to June 7th, 2021 agenda. Number two, one-year contract extension with Superiorian LLC, Lake Mary, Florida, for continued joint administration of the False Alarm Program from July 1st, 2021 through June 30th, 2022, $330,000 per year revenue. Council sponsor, Councilmember Keneer. Number three, contract with Glacier Construction Services, Mulcahale, Washington, for landfill repairs and improvements from June 1st, 2021 through December 31st, 2021, $1,759,005 excluding tax, plus an administrative reserve of 10% of the contract price. Council sponsor, Council President Beggs. Four, low bid of Shamrock Paving, Inc., Spokane, for 2021 arterial chip seal, $1,525,525,525. Administrative reserve of $152,552.50, which is 10% of the contract price, will be set aside. Council sponsors, Council President Beggs and Councilmember Cathcart. Number five, multiple-family housing property tax exemption agreements with A. Red Space LLC, Casper, Wyoming, for nine new multifamily units in an existing commercial building at 131 South Sherman Street, parcel number 35202.1606. Council sponsor, Councilmember Keneer. B. Liberty Project LLC, Spokane, for 24 new multifamily units at 3001 East Liberty Avenue, parcel numbers 35033.1304 and 35033.1305. Council sponsor, Councilmember Keneer. C. Evanverdyne, Spokane, for four new multifamily units at 1860 North Hamilton Street, parcel number 352084.2928. Council sponsor, Councilmember Keneer. D. 509 Capital Properties, 509 Capital Properties LLC, for four new buildings of between four and six units each, for a total of 21 multifamily units at 515 South Conklin Street, parcel number 35201.5442. Council sponsor, Councilmember Keneer. E. 509 Capital Properties LLC, Spokane, for three new buildings of between four and five units each, for a total of 14 multifamily units. B. Payroll claims of previously approved obligations through May 15, 2021, $7,654,411.69. Number seven, city council meeting minutes, April 10 and April 20, 2021. Number eight, third amendment to lease agreement with Ula Polakua Ranch, Inc., Richland, Washington, for the Spokane Envision demonstration site at 130 South Arthur Street from June 1, 2021 through August 31, 2021, $48,960. Relates to special budget ordinance 3336052.
All those in favor of approving the consent agenda as read, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, nay? Any abstentions? All right, the consent agenda is approved, is read, and that brings us to the end of our agenda, but we do have one speaker for open forum, and that's Nicolette Occultree. Nicolette, if you'd like to introduce yourself again, and you have up to three minutes. Do we have you, Nicolette?
Hello, council?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm here, can you hear me?
We have you. Thank you.
Okay, okay, great. Hello again, it's Nicolette Occultree here. I just wanted to say thank you, first of all, for moving the open forum from the legislative session to this briefing session so that we could have this. I really think it's a great move for, for the city overall. I did want to say a few comments, obviously I don't have time within the three minutes to address all of the intricacies of this, but I think that we really need to rethink the multifamily tax credit incentive for developers. I'm afraid the problem the incentive is intended to solve may, in reality, be making things worse. There are a lot of hidden effects that this tax credit has, and one of the things that the multifamily tax credit does is it causes an increase in the average homeowner's property taxes. Because while developers are getting these tax exemptions for 10 years, the individual homeowners are sort of stuck with the bill. You know, the skyrocketing property taxes are a result in part of the tax burden being shifted and the need of supplying the slowing demand of public infrastructure, obviously. Most of these multifamily tax credit buildings are being rented out to tenants, obviously, and of course renters do not themselves pay property taxes. And the folks profiting off the rents, they receive, and to also receive these tax credits, they're not paying property taxes. So the cost of being or becoming a homeowner then increases, which of course is one way of making housing less affordable. Also, the developers who are drawn in by these tax credit incentives are often competing with local Spokane citizens who are attempting to buy a house in an already competitive market. That has contributed to rising costs of market rate housing in the city of Spokane. When a developer can afford to pay hundreds of thousands of dollars all in cash and offer $50,000 over asking, they blow the competition out of the water. This purchasing behavior increases the average cost of market rate housing and puts homeownership even further out of reach for many of our local citizens. We really just need to investigate the impact these incentives have on the totality of the problem that we see composing the housing crisis. So I hope that we can really rethink whether or not these incentives overall are the best approach, if they maybe need to be retooled, or they need to be supplemented with other kinds of incentives that don't work against, you know, the average citizen trying to become a homeowner. Again, I know that this topic is way more complicated than I have time to discuss, but I hope that we can begin the conversation. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Nicolette. And with that, we've come to the end of our agenda. Again, we do not have a meeting next Monday because of the Memorial Day holiday. We do have a study session this Thursday at 11 o'clock, and then we have, I believe, study session the following week, Thursday at 11, and then we'll be back on June 7th. Please take care of yourself, and if you can, take care of somebody else. Have a great day. We're adjourned.